All right, welcome to town meeting. It's 10:03, so we're a little bit late, but we'll make up for it. My name's Jackson Evans. I just kicked my water bottle over. I've been town moderator for the last several years, and if Article One goes in my favor, I'll be town moderator once more. So thank you very much for having me. This is the 235th annual town meeting in Braintree, which is pretty wild. And it's the most electrified and microphoned-up town meeting I think we've ever had. You'll notice we've got this amazing new sound system, which was purchased through a grant, and it was the brainchild of Braintree's own Larry Revett, who happens to be a repackager of audio technology. And Larry came up with the idea for this system to help people who both have difficulty hearing, help people who are on Zoom hear better, and folks who have trouble hearing hear everything that's happening in the meeting. So if you would like to take advantage of one of the assisted listening devices, they're basically a smartphone with a little adapter. You're welcome to get set up with those. And you can actually down, if you have hearing aids that support Bluetooth, you can download an app and it will pop the medium right into your ears. It's pretty amazing, and I really want to thank Larry for his hard work on it. And I also want to especially thank Colin Evans, who's behind me here, who spent many, many hours helping to install the system, volunteering his time. And Daniel Burson from the Select Board, and Megan O'Toole also spent a tremendous amount of time here getting the system set up, which was operational, has only been operational for about the last 12 hours. It's pretty great. Which reminds you of a joke. How many Vermonters does it take to screw in a light bulb? It takes three. One to do it, and two to talk about how much better the old one was. But I think this is a great addition to our town meeting. And I think, can everybody hear me okay? It sounds really good. And I've got like a sinus thing, so I can't really hear anything.
What's the name of the app?
It's called Listen Everywhere.
There's instructions. There are instructions on the table.
There are some instruction sheets on the table. Before we get started, I just wanted to say a few thank yous. As always, the Braintree Select Board does yeoman's work throughout the year to keep our town going and to make good decisions about how we work. And I think they deserve a thank you for all their hard work. Braintree wouldn't be Braintree without Jesse Bressard, our town clerk. She's humble, too. Janice Russell, our town administrator, does a lot of work throughout the year. That's a bold word. Grace Persons has been on board for a little over a year, I think, and done tremendous, great work. And Dylan Pratt and the Road Crew. This has been a bizarre year. I think, you know, they've really adapted. And that's really been the nature of the game.
I just think we ought to underscore how horrible a year it has been for the roads throughout this area. Not only the floods during the summer, but all winter long, they've been wrestling with either mud or frozen ruts. And not only that, for a large part of this year, they were only down to two people, Dylan and Charlie. And I think they've just done a remarkable job for keeping us in the shape that we've got.
Yeah, thank you.
First Paul Woodson out, he's damned up a dirt road.
That ain't what he told me.
And thanks to everybody who brought food. I mean, we all come for the lunch, I think, at some point. So thanks, everybody who brought food for the potluck. And don't forget to stick around for that afterwards. I always like to ask, who's here for the, for whom is this their very first town meeting or Braintree town meeting? Let's say Braintree town meeting. We have a newbie, two newbies. All right, great. Who's been to more than five Braintree town meetings? How about more than 15? 30? 40? Okay, 50 town meetings. Who's been to 50? That's amazing. Thank you.
Who would it be?
Tom Cooch.
One of our auditors.
Four auditors, right. The other, last acknowledgement I wanted to make is to, I'm gonna actually read from the Select Board's report that Megan O'Toole submitted about two Select Board members who resigned this year. Keegan Hop had served on the Select Board since 2017 and offered knowledgeable and informative perspective on all town issues. We appreciate the time. He dedicated to Braintree and the community service and volunteerism. He and his family continue to offer to the broader area within Braintree and beyond. So thank you, Keegan, for all your. And then it would be, you know, not remarking on Charlie McMeekin's years of service to our town, you know, it's really important to acknowledge that. Charlie joined the Board in 2019 shortly after he retired from a long-serving Board member, after filling a long-serving Board member's shoes. As with other roles that Charlie has filled in our community, there are many, and there are many of them. He dove headfirst into learning the workings of the town and was a careful listener and thoughtful contributor to discussions and deliberations. Megan writes, "She often relied on Charlie's guidance in handling the particularly tough elements of managing people and navigating contentious matters before the Board. He was always willing to assist with whatever needed doing and was particularly instrumental in setting up the funding for Braintree residents that need help eating their homes when other assistance runs out. He often offered me and other Board members encouragement when we knew we needed it most, and has become more than just a colleague, but a friend. We could fill many pages with the ways in which Charlie has contributed to our community, but above all, we know him for his kindness and his friendship. We will miss his steady and supportive presence on the Board as he leaves even bigger shoes to fill than the ones he stepped into when he joined us." Each year, we include remembrance of residents who we lost over the last year. And I'm gonna just list those folks who we are missing this year. Eldora Howard, Tuck Dome, William Lawrence Milner, Robert Milo Thresher, Roland Boucher, Nancy A. Swanson, Lucinda Pearl Brown. Are there other names that folks that we missed here? We'll remember them and they're in our thoughts. Last thing I want to, we're gonna go do the Pledge of Allegiance. And this is an important part of our town meeting. And I don't know if others read Paul Kendall, our own Paul Kendall's recent commentary in an online news website, Beechey Digger. I thought I would share some of what he wrote, because it's really fitting, I think, as we move into our town meeting. Paul writes, "On Town Meeting Day, we begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to remind us of the values we share and to set the tone for our public discussion. Whether we were born in Vermont or are newcomers, are high school or college graduates, gun owners or haters, libertarians, progressives, Republicans or Democrats, the pledge reminds us of what we all hold most sacred, the unity of our nation and its promise of liberty and justice for all." His piece goes on to talk about the promise of equality that we are always striving for in this nation. And sometimes we drift a little closer, sometimes we get farther from it. But he talks about the history of the pledge, which is really interesting and not something I really knew much about. The bones of our current Pledge of Allegiance actually dates to the 1890s, and it's endured to this day. So it's really a pretty amazing idea that we kind of share in moments like this. He ends his piece by saying, "When we stand beside our neighbors and our children to recite the pledge, we commit ourselves to listen respectfully to the views of others and to gracefully accept the decisions of the whole Assembly. That is what we do on Town Meeting Day here in Vermont, and it is heartwarming to see it happen elsewhere all year long." So with that, I'll ask you to join me, stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all. Now, a few more housekeeping things, and then we'll get on to the orders of the day. Robert's Rules are the basic rules of order that we're using today for this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedent. You cannot change Vermont state law. But you can change Robert's Rules by a two-thirds vote if you desire. Articles are moved and seconded by the body, then restated by me before it's under consideration and debate on the article. Articles may only have one amendment at a time associated with them, and amendments to an article likewise may only have one amendment at a time associated with them. If you've spoken once on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time during discussion on that article or amendment until all others have had a chance to speak. And I'll hold you to it, I promise. You'll be allowed to speak no longer than 10 minutes, and only for two times. Division of the House can be requested by one voter before or after a voice vote. So if there's a voice vote and you're not sure how it went, you can call for a division of the House, which means people will have to raise their hand or stand to show their vote, and we'll count them. Vermont law provides for a paper ballot on the request of seven voters, again, before or after a voice vote or after a division of the House. Debate may be cut off by a motion to call the question or by a two-thirds vote to do so. So if you think the debate has gone on too long and it's time to vote, you can ask to call the question. And if two-thirds of the body agree with you, we'll vote and stop talking about it. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed to the moderator. So if you have a question, you can address it to me, and we'll figure out who would best to answer it. I'll do my best to recognize you in the order that you've raised your hands. And new this year is, we've got some microphones. And so I know it's gonna be hard, but if you can wait until a microphone gets to you, it will help the sound system. It'll help people who may be watching on Zoom. And I will ask you to state your name before you speak, just so. Some of us know each other, but there are many new faces. So we'll try to get your name out before you start talking. Remarks must be confined to the merit of the question. Under no circumstances will the speaker attack or question the motives of another member. The measure, not the member, is the subject of the debate, and at no time will a person be accused of giving false information or of being a liar or as having committed a lie. Instead, a person might say, "I believe that there is strong evidence that the member is mistaken." Vermont law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. That means that whatever's on our list today are the things we can talk about. Under other business, we can bring up other topics, but we can't take action, binding action, on those items. The goal, my goal as moderators, is to help you carry out your meeting. This is your meeting. It's not the Select Board meeting. It's not the town clerk's meeting. It's not the moderator's meeting. It's your meeting, and I'm here to help you do your business. So if you have a question about where we're at in the process or how Robert's Rules works or what you should be doing now, just raise your hand and we'll get it sorted out. But that's the goal, is to carry out our business in an effective way. And I'm doing all I can to help you do that. You can tell me if I'm ruling improperly. Like if I've made a decision to cut something off and not allow someone to speak, you can vote to overhaul what I've said, which I won't take offense to. At this time, I just want to ask if there are any folks who are not registered to vote in Braintree in the audience today? Okay, if any of the, if you, as a not, as not registered, you can't participate. But if you want to do same-day voter registration, you have that opportunity, in which case you could vote with your voice in town meeting. Does anyone want to vote same-day registration right now? Right now? Go ahead, Les. Okay, I'm gonna, the next thing I'm gonna do is just read through the warning, and then we'll move on to Article One and get to work. Feel free to follow along. Town of Braintree warning, annual town meeting Saturday, March 2, 2024. The legal voters of the town of Braintree and the County of Orange are hereby notified and warned to meet in the Braintree Town Hall in person in said town on Saturday, March 2, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. to transact the following business from the floor. Article One, to elect a moderator for the year ensuing. Article Two, to hear reports of the town officers for the past year. Article Three, shall the voters authorize the size of the cemetery commission to be reduced to three members, each serving a three-year stagger term. Article Four, to elect all town officers as required by law. A, a town clerk for a three-year term. B, a town treasurer for a three-year term. C, a select person for a three-year term. A, a select person for one year remaining of a two-year term. E, lister for a three-year term. F, auditor for a three-year term. G, a delinquent tax collector for a one-year term. H, a first constable for a one-year term. I, a cemetery commissioner for a three-year term. J, a trustee of public funds for a one-year term. Article Five, shall the voters authorize total fund expenditures for operating expenses of $1,401,118, of which $1,087,228 shall be raised by taxes and $313,890 by non-tax revenues. Article Six, shall the town collect its real property taxes in two installments with the due dates being October 15, 2024 and March 17, 2025. Article Seven, shall the voters authorize the disabled veteran's property tax exemption to increase from $10,000 to $40,000 of appraised value per eligible parcel of the municipal grant list pursuant to 32 BSA Section 3802 Subsection 11(c). Article Eight, beginning in 2025, shall the voters authorize the annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in March pursuant to 17 BSA Section 2640. Article Nine, shall the voters adopt the following declaration of inclusion. The town of Braintree condemns racism and welcomes all persons, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, age, disability, or socioeconomic status, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Braintree has been and will continue to be a place where individuals are encouraged to live freely and responsibly, to express their opinions, and listen to the opinions of others. Article Ten, to transact any other business of not a binding nature dated at Braintree, County of Orange, and the State of Vermont this 19th day of January 2024, signed by the Braintree Select Board. This brings us to Article One, in which I will turn over the meeting to Braintree Vice Chair of the Select Board, Daniel Burson. Jackson gave me a script. I had to take a picture of that. So Article One, to elect a moderator for the year ensuing. So I'll ask for nominations.
Jackson, Walt Palmer. Not me, but yeah.
Okay, Steve Seconds. So then we just vote?
If there's no other nominations, Jesse can cast one ballot.
Okay, so do I have any other nominations?
Is there a microphone runner?
Yeah, well.
Do you need one?
She's outside somewhere.
I was trying to enlist my children, but they're occupied. Anybody want to run microphones? Oh, right. Okay. So we're. Yeah, so Jesse, if you can cast one. I guess that's how we do it. Cast one vote for Jackson Evans as moderator. I think that gives you the job, Jackson. Yes, thank you. Thanks very much. That moves us to Article Two, to hear the reports of town officers for the past year. There's no voting on this. It's really just an opportunity for folks to ask questions about anything that are included in the reports that have been submitted by Select Board, auditors, listers, other town-related functions. Doesn't include the budget at this point, I don't think. Maybe budget questions can be asked. Are there any questions about any of the reports included in the town report? Hearing none. We'll thank all the folks who submitted those dutiful reports. Thank you very much. Article Three, shall the voters authorize the size of the cemetery commission to be reduced to three members, each serving a three-year stagger term. To bring this article to the floor, someone would need to make a motion to bring this to the floor. Requires a second?
Second.
I saw Walt Palmer's in first. A motion has been made and seconded. The floor is now open for discussion on Article Three. Shall the voters authorize the size of the cemetery commission to be reduced to three members, each serving a three-year term? And the maker of the motion, which is Linda Dome, has the opportunity to speak first if you wish. Okay, no comment. So the floor is open for discussion.
Malcolm, it's factor. Can you explain this? I know the board or any other article or information works hard. Why reduce the number?
Who, who would like to answer that?
Because you can't find any people to stand up. That's it.
So the.
So to Malcolm, to expand on that, we currently have a five-member board, and we are having trouble filling seats. And it requires quite a bit of work. But we feel like also, historically, it was a three-member board, and then got moved to five, and it operated well as a three-member board. We have three people currently, I believe, Chris. Is that correct?
Yeah, we saw.
So we are, in essence, creating the board as it currently stands and not having those vacant seats that we continue to try to fill. Go ahead.
It seems that, sorry. It seems that that's no reason to reduce the board. We need to find two more members. Given the work that I think is there and that most of the people on the board do the work, I guess I don't understand the rationale still.
For the cemetery commission? They're talking cemetery, not the Select Board.
No, I'm talking about this motion.
So the impetus for this article, we were given this article by the Chair of the Cemetery Commission, because he thought this was a good idea. So I feel like if we take the recommendation of people that run the commission, that might be, I mean, that's why we did this, because they recommended it, the commission itself.
We could ask the question, is there anybody here that want to join the cemetery commission? You know, anybody at all, just raise your hand.
What does the cemetery commission do?
What do they do? Chris, you want to explain that or?
There's quite a bit to be done sometimes during the year. Answer questions concerning citizens. You get the spring cleanup, heat crack of your lawn.
I can't hear you.
Use the microphone.
Can you use the mic? I can't hear you.
Anyway, there's quite a bit to be done. Spring cleanup, clean up all the leaves and limbs and whatever that come down. Get ahead of your mowing. Jason's handiwork comes in for us. Once in a while, somebody passes along, so you need to do burial. Maybe a full burial. Cremations are quite common now. Stones tip over. Tree limbs come down. Any number of things. So if you could find some other people, five might be a good idea. But if you can't, three's better than none.
Does any, I have a question. Just if we switch to three, could we go back to five at some point?
Yes.
How many of the cemeteries are still open and selling lots?
I believe Mountain View's the, Mountain View right down the road here is the last available for lots.
Lynn Beebe, and who takes care of that one specifically? Or do the three of you all work on that for burials?
That cemetery has been assigned to me through the years. But as a whole, if we had volunteer work, everybody tried to show up and chip in and get it done, taking care of whatever the volunteer work might be. And most of the time, it's, you know, stone repair, there was two, three, four of us that show up and fix a stone. So.
Yeah, Tim Caulfield. What's the disadvantage to just leaving it at five and having two vacant seats? What's the disadvantage to just leaving the commission at five and having two empty seats rather than changing it, just waiting and seeing if we can fill them next year or some other year?
Well, I don't know that there's any, you know, I mean, leave it open and see if you can find a couple people. How many people are here? 60, 70? 900 of us probably in town? Maybe you can find a couple, I don't know.
One problem I can see, Tim, and someone can correct me if procedurally this is wrong, is that you have difficulty with a quorum. If anyone, if any member is absent and there are only, then you have difficulty making decisions. So hamstring is the committee a bit in that manner.
Other comments?
What is the quorum on a three-member board?
Two.
One and one?
Two. If there's a three-member board, it only requires two members to be present. With a five-member board, it requires three. So with only three active members, all would have to be present at all meetings.
I thought it was the number that were present to make a decision. Or not.
Other comments?
I want to call one here. I'm not sure how this works, but I'd be willing to come on as an apprentice. Three more members, God forbid something happens to one member, they have a health issue and they can't make it. I could step in and fill, or I'd do it one year to see how it goes and what it's all about.
Alternate? You can be an alternate?
An alternate? Instead, we keep it five. As a suggestion, I'd be willing to.
All right. Jesse, Jesse, Jesse.
I think part of the other problem with keeping it at five is everybody has a year and they're staggered. So when people are looking at it and thinking, oh my gosh, I have to commit to five years, that's a little bit scary also. So if it goes to three members, it's every three years, you're on for a three-year period, and it might not be so daunting to get more people involved.
Ellen Fox. Can we make it a three-member board and have an alternate? Is that a possibility? Because we have an alternate.
I mean, it's, I don't think it's in statute, but we can have somebody. I mean, Cal wants to serve us, you know, as an apprentice and help. I don't think anybody would turn him away. Anybody else have anything they want to add to this? I'm not really sure where this leaves us in terms of the motion. Call a motion? Okay, Tim Caulfield. Tim Caulfield's. Yeah, if there's no other discussion, we can vote on this as it's written right now. It sounds like we're ready for that. So the motion before you is Article Three, shall the voters authorize the size of the cemetery commission to be reduced to three members, each serving a three-year stagger term. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Aye's habit, so the motion carries. Thank you. And Cal, thanks for standing up and offering a warm body. Article Four, to elect all of the town officers as required by law. Yeah, folks who are standing, if you want to come in and fill in, we've got empty, we've got some front row seats. We've got some seats in the back. All right, so this takes us to Article Four, elect all the town officers as required by law. A second is not required for a nomination. So as we go through this, if you would like to nominate someone, you can just state their name. It doesn't require a second. A second is a nice endorsement, but it's not required. So that brings us to Article Four A, a town clerk for a three-year term. Do I have nominations?
Jesse Bressard.
Jessica Bressard. Linda Dome nominated Jessica Bressard.
I'll second that.
Are there other nominations for a town clerk for a three-year term? Hearing none. I asked the town clerk to cast one ballot for herself. Thank you, Jesse. Article Four E, a town treasurer for a two-year term. Nominations?
Three-year term.
Three-year term. Thank you. A town treasurer for a three-year term. Nominations?
Nominate Jesse Bressard.
Nominate Jesse Bressard.
Nice, okay. Other nominations? Nice, okay. Other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Jessica Bressard. Article four C, a select person for a three-year term. Nominations?
Lou Helmoth.
I second it.
Other nominations for a select person for a three-year term? Stuart, any?
I decline, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, other nominations for a select person for a three-year term? Hearing none, I'll ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Lou Helmoth.
Thank you.
Article four D, a select person for one year remaining of a two-year term. Nominations?
I nominate Lynn Beebe.
Other nominations for a select person for a one, one year remaining of a two-year term?
Chelsea Brown.
Other nominations for a select person for one year remaining of a two-year term? All right. Hearing none, and now that we have two candidates, was there another nomination over there? I heard rumblings. No?
I appreciate it very much.
Stuart, the people want you.
They hope they think they do.
All right.
I thank you.
Fair enough. We got a lot of other officers, so I think there's other room for you, Stuart. Okay, with two candidates, we, we have to vote by paper ballot, so this will get interesting and exciting.
Could, could we hear a little bit from each of the two candidates?
That's a good idea. Well, so yeah, if each of the candidates would like to offer a little intro.
Um, I'm Lynn Beebe. I've lived in Braintree most of my life. I did leave for a short time, went south to Royalton, but I'm back. I'm a bookkeeper for many years. I have managed graduate programs and higher education around the state. It's a good time for me to serve. I'm happy to do it and I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chelsea Brown. I know a lot of you I recognize already. I live on Fenton Hill. I've been in Braintree for about eight years now, but I grew up in Vessel, so not too far away. I own the Weber Daniel Cafe in Randolph. And I'm interested in learning a little bit more about local government and just better serving my community that I call home. Can I quit now? And apparently we got the same dress.
Okay, so Jesse, you want to describe how, how this will work?
So-
Give her the mic.
I have. So we'll have an entrance checklist and an exit checklist. I'll run the entrance and Grace will run the exit checklist. So we'll just form a line. You come over here, you'll check in, get your ballot and a pencil, go vote and then you can put it in a box and check out with Grace. And we'll have her set up. Yeah, yeah.
Dan, what are the names for the?
So, yeah, uh, so Lynn Beebe, spelling won't count, so just do your best.
Two Bs.
Two Bs, okay? And Chelsea Brown, okay? Those are the two names. So this is a good opportunity, get a little coffee cake, get some coffee, use the bathroom, stretch your legs and line up your vote. And we'll, we'll treat you mean after. All right, everybody get enough coffee, coffee cake. Thank you all for voting. With the votes cast, Chelsea Brown has been elected with forty-seven votes to Lynn Beebe's twenty-seven. Thank you both for putting your hands up. Volunteering to serve, I mean, this is, we have room on the cemetery commission? But thank you both and thanks everybody for participating. So seventy-four votes, that's, we got a good room here, that's extra. Okay, moving on. Article four. Article four E, a lister for a three-year term. Other nominations?
I nominate Jackson Evans.
Yeah, other nominations, please? Hearing no other nominations, I'll ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Jackson Evans. Stuart? Article four F, to elect an auditor for a three-year term. Nominations?
Lynn Beebe.
Does Lynn Beebe accept the nomination?
I think not. I, no, I'm not.
Who's the current auditor?
Who is the current auditor? It's Lynn Brown.
Like he's resigning?
Or Tom Pooch.
No, it's, it's Lynn and he's resigning, or, or he's done. Turn is off, Lynn Brown.
Are there other nominations for the, yes?
Colin Evans?
Colin Evans. Of sound system fame. Other, second? Other nominations for an auditor for a three-year term? All right, hearing none, I'll ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Colin Evans. Thank you, Colin. Article four G, a delinquent tax collector for a one-year term. Nominations?
Jessica Bressard.
Other nominations for a delinquent tax collector for a one-year term? Hearing none, I'll ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Jessica Bressard. Article four H, a first constable for a one-year term. Nominations?
I nominate Steve Bressard.
Other nominations for a constable for a one-year term? Hearing none, I'll ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Stephen Bressard. Article four I, a cemetery commissioner for a three-year term. Nominations?
Who is currently serving?
Oh, one second.
Currently held.
Oh, yes, Chris.
Chris, do you want to serve again?
No, thank you. Been twenty years.
By the way, thank you, Chris, for twenty years.
No, no, that's Cal Poole.
Cal Poole?
I think he's accepted.
Any other nominations for a cemetery commissioner for a three-year term? That apprenticeship went quick. I'll ask Jessica Bressard to cast one ballot for Cal Poole. Article four J, the trustee of public funds for a one-year term. Nominations?
Jessica Bressard.
Who is it currently?
Uh, it's Jess, Jessica Bressard, is currently. Linda Bellness. Other nominations for a trustee of public funds for a one-year term? Hearing none, I'll ask Jesse Bressard, or the town clerk, to cast one ballot for Jesse Bressard. Thank you. This takes us to Article five, which reads, shall the voters authorize total fund expenditures for operating expenses of one million four hundred one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, of which one million eighty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars shall be raised by taxes and three hundred thirteen eighty-nine thousand by non-tax revenue? Will need a motion to bring this before the body? Second? A motion has been made and seconded. The floor is now open for discussion on Article five. Shall the voters authorize total fund expenditures for operating expenses of one million four hundred one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars, of which one million eighty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars shall be raised by taxes and three hundred thirteen thousand eighty-nine, eight, eighty-nine hundred by non-tax revenue? That's the hardest part of this whole thing. Regina, you have the privilege of speaking first if you'd like, as the maker of the motion, otherwise we'll open the floor for discussion.
Just hoping somebody on the board could just do an overview of the budget changes and percent increase and all that.
Hi there. My name's Lou Helmoth. I am a new member of the board, not only elected to a three-year term today, but I filled the big shoes of Keegan-Haupt when he left the board in October, so I've been on the board for three months. Trying to wrap my head around all of this, so I'll do my best to, to give you sort of my take on how I look at the budget. I was involved with the building of the budget. And obviously what we try to do is remain very conservative and understanding that every increase yields a potential tax increase for each and every one of us. So we look at trying to provide the town with the services that the town needs, that the town has historically provided and try to do our best to make that happen as cheaply as possible because we're all taxpayers too. And so the result of that, as you can see, is a really detailed budget, you know, lots and lots of line items. But I look at it and say that, that we, there is about a five-point-five percent increase in expenditures. And that totals about seventy-eight thousand dollars of increase over last year. That's occasioned by sort of external cost increases. And, and when I look at the, you know, there are a bunch of like little, you know, thirty-dollar increase, thirty-dollar decrease, but the, the big ones that, that I see are fire department, nine-thousand-dollar increase. Health insurance, just because of the market out there, went up twenty thousand dollars. Telephone is a thousand. Insurance, property and liability insurance and workers' comp insurance went up nine thousand dollars. Gravel went up twenty thousand dollars over last year's budget. So all of that equals, you know, those, those bigger increases are a hundred and one thousand dollars of increases over which we had little control. Thirty-five thousand dollars of that is road crew salary. And that's because this year, in this budget, we for the first time have a full cohort of, of a road crew, which we've not had for a multitude of reasons over the past few years. So that's, that's a thirty-five thousand dollar piece of that one hundred and one. So all of that is a, a five-point-five percent increase, the bulk of which, you know, we don't have a lot of direct control over and we've done our best at every other line item to, you know, hold the line, definitely not, you know, doing anything extravagant, but trying to, you know, get the work of the town done. So that's my best shot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Good morning, Sherry Richardson. Are you able to tell me how much town employees contribute to the health insurance? And is that also determined based on hours work, whether you're part-time, full-time, et cetera?
I, I can kind of, I pay insurance and taxes. I pay somebody to do all that for me, but I'm trying to explain it. So it does matter if you're part-time or full-time. So there's four, seven of us that are full-time. Not everybody is on the health insurance. And I can't tell you exactly who, because there's people that were gonna be on and came off and, and everything, but as far as I'm not one hundred percent sure and I, I may have to clarify this at, at a, somewhere down the road and maybe you know. I think it's, we contribute ten percent, I think. I don't think it's twenty. I think it's ten percent. And, um, we contribute, and then, um, the deductible, the first sixty percent of the deductible, the town pays also, so we pay forty percent of the deductible, so.
And that ten percent, does that go up if you're, if you have a two-person or a family plan versus a single plan?
Can you, can you rephrase the question? I don't know that I understand the question.
If you have more than one person on the plan, does that ten percent change?
You meaning, do we pay more than ten percent?
Exactly. I mean, I'm asking the question because in, in most businesses, there, the employee will pay a percentage of a single plan. Or the employer may pick up all of the costs of a single plan. When you start adding more people to your plan and go to a two-person plan or a family plan, the employee is responsible for the additional amount. So that's what I'm asking.
The employee does, the employee does pay more, because I have a family plan and I pay the most of anybody towards the health insurance.
But it's still ten percent.
The percentages don't change. Yeah, you can, you can explain the fact. Percentages of the time still pays ten percent.
The employee pays, pays ten percent of the town's.
Right, yes, it stays the same.
Other questions, comments? Okay, something to that?
Can you explain how the residential versus non-residential tax rate is calculated and why there's not that much of a difference between a non-residential and residential? And can we increase the non-residential?
Yeah, Jesse, I think Jesse, between Jesse and I, we can get to something closer than explanation.
Yeah, I mean, residential, you have to live here more than, um, yeah, a hundred, I think it's a hundred and eighty consecutive days you have to live here to be a resident and claim residence here. You have to do that through the state of Vermont. You can't just come in and say, I'm a resident. You can't just assume that we know you're a resident. You have to fill out paperwork and send it to the state. State downloads that to the town and that's how you get the town residential rate. So anybody who does not live here gets the non-residential rate, or if you don't fill out that paperwork, you get the non-residential rate. Those rates change and I-
So the, the, the state of Vermont Department of Taxes sets the, each town's education side of the tax rate. And it's, it, it's different for residents versus non-residents. Typically, the non-residential rate's higher. The town doesn't, we have one tax rate for, for municipal taxes, which is regardless of whether you're a resident or non-resident, what change, what changes is on the education side of it. So that's, that's where the difference comes in. And some towns, it's actually swapped where residents pay a higher rate than non-residents. It's, every town is different. The math is, will make your brain melt if you try to think about it too long. Luke Fisher, our math whiz on the Lister's Board, is, understands this stuff in and out. It's really complicated. And I, you know, it, it's different every year, so.
What is it now?
Yeah, it's in the front, on the old inside cover.
So you've got the non-residential education portion was one point four four zero nine. The homestead was one point four four zero six. was 1.4406, so three one-thousands of a penny difference in resident versus non-resident.
I hope that answers your question, Ethan.
Is there a way to increase the non-residential?
It comes from the Department of Taxes, yeah. Other questions?
I don't really have a question. I guess I'm short on a statement, I don't know where other people stand in the community. I struggle with the term conservative budget when we talk about the town of Braintree. Not specific to this board, I think we've kind of had a history of maybe some excessive spending in the town. I'm not sure if people are aware, if you look at the municipal tax rates in Orange County, but Braintree sits about second highest, um, we have a higher municipal tax rate than the town of Randolph, we have a higher municipal tax rate than the town of Brookfield, and pretty much every other town in our county. And that baffles me, because we don't have a lot of municipal responsibility, we don't have sidewalks that we maintain, we don't have an excessive amount of municipal buildings. I'm coming a little bit secondary in that I've witnessed Keegan sitting on the board for the last however many years he did, and learned quite a bit from the sidelines. My understanding and what seems to have been to explain to him over the years was perhaps the original boosting of this high tax rate was to provide this general fund for our community, which basically provides sort of some additional cash base that sits there that can be used for backup. For example, this year, my understanding is we had $230,000 we were under budget that we didn't spend, which some people would say, "That's great, we're doing a great job." Then why are we increasing the budget again to our taxpayers? Because it sounds like we're already probably bringing in more money than perhaps we actually need to be. We have a general fund that's going to be $600,000. That leaves our select board with a whole lot of room to spend money on what they feel worthy, and perhaps we want to put that kind of trust in our select board, but recently, that came down to almost the purchase of a gravel pit that had a lot of contention from various people. And these meetings are hard, because forty, fifty, seventy of us sit here, not many in my age demographic, which I'm disappointed in, but I understand with kids and families, but we gotta be able to stay and live here, and if our tax rates just kind of keep sliding up with this idea of, you know, we gotta keep padding what we need, there's a struggle. I think there's room for improvement in our budget in where we do highway maintenance. This isn't personal to our highway crew at all, they don't set their budget necessarily. The town of Brookfield has 78 miles of dirt road they maintain. They do that at a budget of about $16,000 a mile. This can be figured by just looking at their town report from 2022 and our town report from 2022. We have 48 miles of dirt road in Braintree, and that, sorry, sorry, 43 miles of dirt road in Braintree. Our cost effective comes out to about 22,000 mile, or $22,000 a mile, sorry, excuse me, $28,000 a mile to maintain that. Why does it cost our town so much more money to maintain our roads than surrounding towns that have the exact same general setup? And are roads in good shape? Yes, but are other towns also? Yes. Do we need a fourth road crew? That's been a question, I know that was a challenge for Keegan sitting on the board, I'm, I'm not sure we do. Again, Brookfield does 78 miles with four people, he got 48 mile, 43, excuse me, miles. I'm questioning, do we need to raise the budget this year? Can we sit tight and maybe start to take a look at the spending that we're doing? So that my family can stay here, and my kids can maybe raise their kids here, because at a .09 budget, or municipal rate that compares to a .04 in Brookfield, that's a real struggle to understand that. So I don't know, maybe there's a lot of explanation that we've missed over the years, but I don't think so. And I don't want to speak for my husband, but I will say, he didn't leave the board because he wanted more time for his family. He left because he wasn't heard, and you get that kid's old. I'm not sure the people on the current board have a really great financial sense of how to protect us, and I'm not trying to be personal, I just, I'm scared for our town, and I'm worried, and I'm afraid that we just keep eyeing our way through these meetings here for lunch. I'm not here for lunch, I'm here so my family can stay.
Other comments?
Uh, Luke Fisher, I'm a Lister, and I just wanna, oh, thank you. You've never been pleased with being quiet. I just want to make a small comment to adjust one of the things that you said, and, um, to my, the best of my ability, I'll try to make this short and sweet. So when we compare tax rates between towns, we also have to think a little bit about when that town was appraised. So it's not just the tax rate, it's also where the town appraisal sits in relation to the current market, and I don't know specifically how that applies to what, what you said, and maybe it does or doesn't, because I don't know where those towns are sitting in terms of their appraisal. When a town's appraisals get so far out of whack with the market, then the town has to reappraise, which is what we're faced with, and every town but two, I think, in Orange County, so, um, I just wanted to make that point.
If I could just, um, respond to that, Randolph is in the middle of a reappraisal currently, and Brookfield, I'm not sure if they finished in 2022 or 2023, but they just barely finished, so, um, I don't know what their, their tax rate is now, but I do know that Randolph's currently, without the fire department or the police, um, is five cents less than ours, so, um, yes, we are more, but, um, not how much we are alive.
Over here.
With regard to the reappraisal, sorry. With regard to the reappraisal, where we were supposed to be every 10 years or so, now it's saying six years, we were just appraised in 2020, that brings us to 2026, but I've also heard, maybe I read it in here somewhere, or I heard on the street, that we were looking at starting reappraisals possibly this year.
That's for the entire state of Vermont?
No.
No.
Yeah, we're, I can, as, on the, I'm on the board of Listers too, and we, we do, our, we are looking at a reappraisal in the next couple of years, a new one. This, so the six-year rule is a new state statute, but your, towns are required to reappraise when their statistical, when the yearly statistical analysis shows that the appraised, assessed value is lower than the sale values, or it's out of whack with sale value.
Right, right.
And so we finished our reappraisal, right, if, if you recall, right, as COVID was happening, and so we set all of our levels pre-COVID, and then COVID happened, and we've had three years of increased property sales, and things selling way over assessed value. So we had all these fresh numbers in 2020, 2020, or 2021, and then those numbers are out of whack again, so.
Right, so are we looking at a 2026?
We don't know, the state, in the summer, the state will send a reappraisal letter to all the towns that are required to reappraise, which will lay out the timeline for how that reappraisal will happen, when it should happen. There aren't enough people in the state to do all the reappraisals that are being required, so it's likely going to be several years before we actually get to a reappraisal, but we are headed there. Other, other comments, questions? You got one up front?
My, Malcolm, my understanding is that if the value goes up, the tax rates should go down, has that been occurring?
Well, the tax rate's based on the grand list, and when, if the grand list increases, theoretically, and you're raising a similar amount of money each year, your tax rate would drop, would go down.
Has it gone down with the reappraisal that you did in the past?
I don't remember where, it went, it stayed pretty even. I mean, the goal of a reappraisal shouldn't be too drastic, it should, you know, typically a third of properties go up, a third go down, and a third stay the same, so you're, you should be kind of equalized, but.
Let me ask you, how much were we off from, so we have to have a reappraisal on six?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, you know, anecdotally, properties are selling for, I don't know, Luke, what's, what do you think, pound average?
Anywhere from 50 to 200, 200-plus percent.
Over the appraisal.
So it's not, it's not untemple for a house that we have appraisal on of 285,000 is selling in the mid-fours. So houses are going for way over the appraisal.
But is it, then, is that relationship hold when they reappraise? That's more value for the town, or the tax will down, based on that valuation? Do you want to?
It's, it's hard, you can't really predict it, it depends on what the budget is, how much we have to spend. The tax rate is a, you know, it's a combination of those two things, grand list and budget.
But the, the question is that we're, the budget doesn't seem to go down. And so I'm wondering, just as the lady on the other side said, we're, we're spending money because we think we have it, because there's a tax system that encourages reappraisal.
Well, the, the changes that have been happening in the real estate market have not affected the grand list, because the town appraisals have not changed since the last reappraisal, which was 2019, I guess. So even though it's all over the place, that is only going to affect it, one, there's a new reappraisal, and then there's a new grand list. So nobody's, appraisals have changed in the town since the reappraisal, unless there have been improvements to the property or subdivisions or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so in, in other words, the grand list has not changed drastically since the last reappraisal. Question over here.
Is it appropriate to ask the select board to respond to Lindsey's comment?
I have a couple things, but if you want to say something first, you're welcome to.
There was a, there was a question down front.
Lynn Vee, um, what house sells for the Listers? You come and look at it after the sale, and, no?
No.
No. Now, there's no, that would be sales chasing, which they discourage in the Lister's world.
Oh, another question, when I sold my house, I received a letter from the Listers asking why it was sold for more.
So it probably didn't ask you specifically why it was sold for more. So, the, the state wants our grand list to be in, uh, in whack? Not out of whack, in, in, whatever, on what things are selling at. If the sale prices get out of whack with the grand list, that triggers a reappraisal, and that's based on a numerical formula, which I happened to explain another time. I lost my train of thought.
The, the question is, when we send sales, the reason we collect sales information.
The state wants to know information about each sale. They want to know if it's a quote-unquote "good sale." A good sale is between a motivated buyer and a motivated seller, and it's an arm-length sale, so I sell it to my kid, it doesn't count, sell it to my neighbor, it doesn't count, distressed sales don't count, estate sales may or may not count. There's a list in our software, 20 items long, why we, by the state, will bump a sale. So again, they're making judgments about a reappraisal based on what they consider to be valid sales, and all those things I just mentioned are what determine a valid sale. So when we send you a letter, usually me, I'm asking, so I'm asking, you know, did you sell it to a family member, was it a distressed sale, did the seller take back a mortgage? All of those things complicate or influence whether it was what was called an arms-length sale. Was there a huge amount of work done just before the sale? Was there two tractors and a dump truck included in the sale? So all of those things influence that.
A follow-up to that one, when I purchased another property in Braintree, the Listers came and looked at it and measured it, and, so what was the purpose of that based on just my purchase?
There must have been, yeah, we can, the, we are getting a little off-topic here, but there, I'm not sure exactly, if you want to talk, if you want to call Luke, he's in the office Tuesday mornings, he'd be happy to dig up the old. I don't, and I don't recall specifically what the reasons were, but, but I do think we need to get back to the budget conversation, and I did want to, Steve's question to the select board about if they wanted to respond, I want to return to that. Is there any? Jesse had a comment.
So, so I did want to just discuss a couple of things, the $230,000 surplus in fiscal year '23, uh, part of that was due to the fact that income...
Just the L's. All right.
Here's your sound check.
No shortage of excitement today.
So, um, on the income side, uh, there was $143,700 extra brought in that was unanticipated. We, um, we had a lot of delinquent taxes that came in, a lot of interest that came in, um, there was a lot of, uh, we, due to, um, some money that we put into CDs and so on, we brought in, uh, like, eight or $10,000 more than anticipated in interest and so on, and, um, one thing that we had been doing was, um, because we had had four road crew members for quite some time, we kept the salary in there for the four road crew members due to the fact that we were actively trying to hire more than the two road crew members, so, um, that money was kept in there, so I believe that that was quite a bit less. You can't just raise taxes so that you can build a surplus. That $600,000 has taken quite a long time to get there. When I first came in, we were using tax anticipation notes, we were borrowing for everything, um, and so on, and I, I feel like, um, that we've just done a really good job in trying to keep expenditures down, and, and so on. That $600,000 didn't appear overnight, it's been adding for quite a number of years. The, the amount that is suggested by GASBEE, the whatever governmental accounting, blah, 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 um, is that you have 15% of your budget in a general fund in case of emergencies, in case of flooding, in case of whatever, so that, um, so that you have that. So the other thing that we've done, um, so I can do the math quickly, um, so... So, whoa, that's not the answer. Right, well, it was 21 million, so, uh, no, it's, so 210,000 of that should kind of just be earmarked to sit there in case of emergencies and so on, based on GASBEE recommended, recommendations. And then, as we go through, um, the budgeting process and so on, lost my track, um... Oh, yes, thank you. So we do try to take some of that money and put it back in to kind of keep the tax rate down, and the tax rates aren't set until the summer. Right now, uh, the select board has 25,000 of that 600,000 set aside to go back into the income to help keep the tax rate down and so on, and, um, that can change. And that can change as we get towards setting the tax rate this summer.
I want to get this other folks before, anybody who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to, who'd like to speak.
I didn't know what the select board wanted to speak first.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll, I, my name's Tim Caulfield. I was on the select board for five years, chair most of the time. And I, I would say the select board works, these numbers are built line by line by line as we set. And nobody's padding anything here. We're, we're doing, at least when I was on board, and I believe it's true now, there's just an effort to minimize the increase each year and to try to make sure it's minimal for the, for the citizens of the town. I would encourage anybody who thinks otherwise to join the select board and get on Budget Committee because that's, that's really where the, where the rubber hits the road. And if, if you don't like what the select board's doing, run for the select board and change it.
Select board, do you guys want to respond?
I'll let it play out.
Okay.
Okay, I'd just like to say that I did a little bit of research into why this tax rate is what it is for the town of Braintree. This is my perception on it.
My, pre 1990s, you know, the, the population in Braintree was around 500 people. And somewhere in the 90s and for about 10 or 11 years up through, Braintree saw a 10% per year increase in population. So over that 10 or 11 year span, we had over 100% increase in population. But we never took the time to reset the tax rate. So now we have over twice as much tax money coming in that we don't need. And that's when I believe maybe late 90s, whenever the, the capital plan was, was built in the capital budget and the general fund that funds this was put together because I think the boards at the time were seeing more money than they needed. And I am for saving some money so that we're not spending money when we finance a truck or any of that. But I think that general fund is much more, it has more cash flow than it needs. It's way overfunded. Like Lindsey said, the town of Brookfield, you know, I'll pick on them a little bit because when you look into it, their square miles are the same, they're the same size as Braintree, okay? We have a similar, similar population within less than 200 people. They offer the same thing that Braintree offers, which is dirt roads. That's it. There's no town pool, there's no town rec center, there's no recreation fields, there's nothing else. We offer dirt roads, they offer dirt roads. But when you take our budget and this year's budget, if it gets voted in, and you divide it by the number of miles in our dirt roads, 43, we're looking at over $32,000 a mile. These two towns are apples to apples the same town. Theirs is $16,000 a mile. They don't have a huge general fund, but they do contribute and save some money over there. And I think if we looked at spending the same $16,000 a mile in Braintree that they spent per mile in Brookfield, that would give us a budget of about $688,000. And we could add $100,000 to that and put that $100,000 a year right into our general fund and still be a lot less and well off than we are right now. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yes.
And he's been on the board.
If anybody has a question, I'd be happy to try and answer one.
Sandy Kooch, I've reported a lot of town meetings over the years. I, I think that mile, you know, cost per mile kind of thing will vary a bit on how much you have in reserve funds. So, you know, I don't think Brookfield has many, any. So if you're borrowing for a truck or if you happen to have a spike in costs because of gravel or whatever, that rate, I think in Brookfield is going to go up and down and probably be worse steady than Braintree. Maybe the board can speak to that.
Sorry, I have to do it.
I, I'm not, I'm not clear about the question that you're asking of the board, whether the, the, whether the general fund is a part of the per road calculation? Is that what you're asking?
Sandy?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I wasn't thinking about the general fund so much, but.
Yeah, I think she was asking about the effects that reserve funds play on that rate, on how the, the rate would change.
Well, I, I hope this is an answer. It would depend how much of the reserve fund is applied to this year's, funding this year's budget. And this year, we recommended that we take $25,000 from the reserve fund and put it toward this next year's expenses.
From the general fund.
From the general fund. Right, thank you for, and, and last year, I believe the budget called for a $50,000. The, the town approved a $50,000 allocation from the general fund to the 24 budget. So we're 25, we, we did $25,000 less this year. So I think that would then impact the, the ultimate tax rate because of how much we have to fund through taxes this year versus through other, this non-revenue source that you see in the article of $313,000. Help?
We just, just so you folks know, we just purchased a new truck and the cost of these trucks that we need to plow, sand, haul gravel, haul away ditch material that we're cleaning, which is, went up almost $100,000 since COVID. So that's just to give you an idea of just how much stuff has gone up. And I really feel that we have shaved, we started with a higher budget than what is presented in front of you. And we went back to the drawing board, the ones on the committee to set the budget up and shade someone off and came up with some ideas to keep the tax rate down. And when Keegan was on here, even when Keegan was on, it'd go up a little every year, but not as significant as this year. Of course, it hasn't, you know, the, the equipment and stuff like that hadn't gone up like this has since COVID. It's really crazy. Even if we went back to a single axle, it'd be like $80,000 more than a one that was back before COVID because we just priced on Rock River.
So I'll try to take a minute. I don't know that I can answer every question because it's been a while and I made some notes, but I don't know that I got it all. I want to echo Jesse's point that the surplus is not built from us raising your taxes to bring more money into stuff into savings. Generally, all that, or the majority of that money, especially that $230,000 that was mentioned, came from sources outside of the line item budget. Is that correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's, they're line items, but we got more money from the state of Vermont than we anticipated, than they told us they were going to give us. And we also brought in $110,000 extra in delinquent taxes and another $11,000 in delinquent tax interest over what was anticipated.
So those were not, those were not items where we over budgeted specifically in order to put money back later, I guess is what I'm trying to say there. I want to also echo what Jesse said, that it's not a bad idea to have a lot of this, have some money back for emergencies. I know of at least one town in central Vermont who was hit with a flood this year, who had plans to build a massive facility to benefit their town, and now that's gone because they spent all of that money to deal with floods. I also know of one town in the upper valley who's proposing a 20% tax rate to their citizens because costs have gone up so much across the board. So everyone is being affected by this. We did our best to play in the margins to keep things as low as possible. Also, sometimes what this general fund allows us to do is to buy things outright rather than financing some things. We also have vehicle funds and equipment funds and so on and so forth, but it can help us save financing charges to the town. We're going to enter a situation soon with our vehicle fund, fund, despite all of our planning, that it's going to start to run dry. So we've been in the past buying our equipment outright because we'd saved up enough money. But like Lauren said, this latest truck cost us $100,000 more than the previous. So the budgeting and planning changes when you have a 40% increase in cost of a piece of equipment over the course of three years. So having some money that we can help offset financing also helps us. And like Lou said, I will echo that also, we do our best to not necessarily level fund the budget every year, but to incrementalize tax increases. We, if you get to a position where you do not have a surplus and you lower taxes too drastically every year, you will enter sort of a yo-yo phase where taxes will drop dramatically, then you run out of money to offset taxes and they'll rise dramatically, and then they'll fall and they'll rise. And so it becomes a difficult thing to budget for, both for people personally paying taxes and for us as a town. So there are a lot of considerations that go into this. We do sit down and look at every line in the budget to try to get it as trim as possible. And this is where we end up this year.
Folks who haven't had a chance to speak yet? We got one back here, someone who has not spoken, I want to give them a chance.
Ellen Fox. But I also wonder with the increases in taxes, I know in other towns that we let, we split the payments not just in two, but into four, and sometimes that's easier. I don't know if that's anything that the board has.
I'll, I'll just say, in the town of Braintree, when it went from one payment to two payments, the town voted to not collect interest until after the second payment. So in the town of Braintree, you can make your tax payment anytime you want. You can pay it ahead, you can pay it on March 15th. You can wait until March 15th to pay your taxes. We prefer that you don't, but you can, you can, there's some people, I swear, they pay it before they even have their tax bill. I don't, we send the tax bill, they're in the next day, they pay the whole thing. So we don't have to adjust it at all because that is a thing. If you want to come in and pay monthly, you can do that too.
I'd like to call a question.
I have my hands up there to get a call.
Yeah, sure. I would give your last, last words and we'll call the question.
Just a couple of things. The, the CLA does not impact the budget. It impacts how much individuals pay toward the budget, right? So it's just, it's a, it's a shift of the money. This person is paying this much in taxes, this person's paying that much, and the CLA, the reappraisal happens, that person's paying more, maybe that person's paying a little less. I have never, ever in all the years that I've lived in Vermont, I've never actually seen a reappraisal be done when the market goes down. I, I, I've never seen it. I'm not sure when that ever happened, but I'd be interested in that. But the bottom line is, first of all, I just want to say, I don't think anybody here suggested dramatically lowering taxes. I think what I heard Keegan say was, or maybe it was Lindsey, suggesting level funding because there was the surplus money, because there is this money in the general fund and because nobody knows what's going to happen with taxes over the next year or so with the reappraisal, et cetera. This is, it, it's not just, you know, the cost of the truck that went up as a result of COVID. Everybody's costs went up across the board. I mean, you cannot walk into Shaw's supermarket without dropping 200 bucks on two bags of groceries. Everybody is feeling those pains from COVID. And furthermore, I, I think it is, it would be really disingenuous to think that you can continue to just see the raises in, in taxes and, and the increase in the budgets. Not that some of this stuff isn't really necessary, but this is a time right now where everybody personally, professionally, and in the municipalities have to tighten their.
All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay.
Would you like to request a paper ballot?
Paper ballot? Let's see, we need seven other people. Who, who else would like a paper ballot for this, for this item?
Need seven. If you want a paper ballot.
Raise your hand, raise your hand if you want a paper ballot.
Clarify what we're voting on.
Oh yeah, so, sorry, the question before the board, the body is, shall the voters authorize total fund expenditures for operating expenses of $1,401,118, of which $1,087,228 shall be raised by taxes and $313,890 by non-tax revenue? So Sherry, back to you, you had called for a paper ballot. Are there other, who else would like a paper ballot? Raise your hand now, please.
Does a verbal vote happen first and then request the paper ballot?
I think a paper ballot can be requested anytime on the approval of seven other voters, but I have not seen seven other hands, so.
Jackson, just another question. If people aren't happy with that cost, could an amendment be made to reduce that total amount to be raised by taxes? Would that be the simplest way of addressing that if there are concerns? Somebody made an amendment to that?
It would be, but we've called the question and the question's now before the board. So it would have to be, if, if we're, we're preparing to vote, if we vote and it's voted in the affirmative, someone who voted in favor of the budget could request reconsideration of the budget, which would, or of that article, which would take us back to the start. But you have to have voted in favor of it. You can't be against the article.
Yes. Actually, years ago, I thought you had 30 days on this. Is that right or no? Because something was bought that shouldn't have been bought at that time and they didn't have the money for it. So what, what happened then?
That's a, that's a good question. I don't, I mean, 30 days, if it weren't, if it wasn't warned properly or something like that, then perhaps it could be reconsidered after, but in general, the law says reconsideration has to happen before the next article is called on the agenda and by someone voting in the affirmative. So just to get back to where we were, the articles before the board, we have not had enough votes for a paper ballot, so we're going to, we're going to vote. Voting on the main motion, the motion asks the body, shall the voters authorize total fund expenditures of operating expenses of $1,401,118, of which $1,087,228 shall be raised by taxes and $313,890 by non-tax revenue? Voting aye means you wish to pass the motion. Voting nay means you wish to defeat it. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, and I believe the ayes have it. The motion carries. That brings us to Article Six. Shall the town collect its real property taxes in two installments with the due dates being October 15th, 2024, and October 17th, 2025?
March.
March 17th, 2025. Thank you, Jesse. Need a motion to bring this before the body? Motion's been made and seconded. The floor is now open for discussion on Article Six, which states, shall the town collect its real property taxes in two installments with the due dates being? real property taxes in two installments with the due dates being October 15th, 2024, and March 17th, 2025? Maker of the initial motion has the privilege of speaking first. Any discussion, questions?
Call the question.
All right, all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
The question before the board, shall the, before the body, shall the town collect its real property taxes in two installments with due dates being October 15th, 2024, and October 17th, 2025? March 17th. It's lunchtime, 2025. Voting aye means you wish to pass the motion, voting nay means you wish to defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're at a crucial juncture here. We have still three articles before the body, but it's noon.
Let's power through.
Power through, okay, okay. Feel free to hop out and grab a refreshment. Article 7, shall the voters authorize the disabled veteran's property tax exemption to increase from $10,000 to $40,000 of appraised value per eligible parcel on the municipal grant list pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3802 Subsection 11(c). Entertained a motion to bring this before the body?
So, who was that?
Second? Well, motion's made and seconded. The floor is now open for discussion on Article 7. Shall the voters authorize the disabled veteran's property tax exemption to increase from $10,000 to $40,000 of appraised value per eligible parcel on the municipal grant list pursuant to 32 VSA Section 308 Subsection 11(c)? Luke, you made the motion, would you like to speak on this?
No.
Okay. Discussion?
I'll just, I'll just say, it's okay, sorry. We had a veteran that came in and asked for this, this is by state law. You are required to have, to give veterans and their significant others, or, I don't know, I think it's just spouses, but $10,000. You can give up to $40,000 in this, based on this state law. It was a veteran that came in and asked for that, and I think that's all I had to say.
And just, just as a little bit of explanation from a Lister's perspective, this, this basically takes, currently we're taking $10,000 off the, basically off the appraised value of the property, so it's before taxes are assessed. Reduction, sorry.
Tim Caulfield, I'm just asking for a clarification. When I was on the select board, this was basically a one-person campaign statewide. There was one guy who went around and tried to get this on the ballots for all of the towns. Is that the case, or is that not the case?
That is not the case this year. It was an actual veteran who owned the property in the town of Braintree that asked for that.
If we were to, Paul Kendall, if we were to approve this, what would be the net effect in terms of the tax rate for the rest of us?
So I did, we had run, I can answer this, if, I don't know if anybody else has. When we first started, when this first came up, the Lister's ran some numbers to kind of look at what it would do. If we increase the exemption to the $40,000 maximum, we typically have six to seven disabled veterans in Braintree who take advantage of this. That would, you know, that would add, let's see. Yeah, it's, right, 280,000, which reduces the taxable grant list by 2,400 to 2,800. It's a pretty minimal, when you're talking about per $100 in property value. It doesn't, it doesn't reduce the grant list significantly, it's about a $3,000 reduction.
What question? Call the question.
Is there another comment? I saw a hand back there.
I don't have a question, I just have a remark. If it's a disabled veteran, we're speaking English here, you know, I think they've earned it. Thank you.
Did I call the question? All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the question before the board, shall the voter, before the body, shall the voters authorize the disabled veteran's property tax exemption to increase to, from $10,000 to $40,000 of appraised value per eligible parcel on the municipal grant list pursuant to 32 VSA Section 3802 Subsection 11(c)? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Article 8, beginning in 2025, shall the voters authorize the annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in March pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2640. Look for a motion to bring this up. Second? Steve, I saw. Motion's been made and seconded. Floor is now open for discussion on Article 8, asking, beginning in 2025, shall the voters authorize the annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in March pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2640? Linda, do you want to speak, or do you want to pass it on? Comments, questions, discussion?
Does anybody have any idea comparison to how many people are involved on a Tuesday or Saturday?
So the numbers ended up being about the same as far as how many people show up, whether it's Saturday or Tuesday. You may have changing of some people, some people can make it Saturday, some people can't, and vice versa on a Tuesday. What I do see myself is that we have more voter participation when we have town meeting on a Tuesday in the various, especially the school budget, where we have less than 100 people that vote in a $26 million school budget, and, and there's just, there's more people that vote if we have town meeting on the Tuesday as opposed to, because the voting can only happen on Tuesday.
Which is a good reminder to vote on Tuesday in Braintree. It'll be here between 9:00 and 7:00 p.m., okay? Other discussion, questions?
Just to get an idea, would it be possible to have a show of hands, how many people in this room currently would be able to attend if it was to be on Tuesday next year?
All right, sure, we can just drop all. Show of hands if you'd come to town meeting next year on Tuesday. I can't. Raise your hand if you cannot make it next Tuesday, next year on Tuesday.
And, oh, there's a follow-up, are schools still taking that day off, or would that go back on their calendar?
It's a state off. Well, not a state off, yes. Other, other questions, discussion? All right, doesn't look like there's any more discussion, so we can, the question before the body is Article 8, which asks, beginning in 2025, shall the voters authorize the annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in March pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2640? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Appears the ayes have it. See you next year. Sorry. Okay, Article 9. This is a long one, I'm going to read it once and then I'll probably just refer back to it on the nature of getting through this. Article 9, shall the voters adopt the following declaration of inclusion. The town of Braintree condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, age, disability, or socioeconomic status, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Braintree has been and will continue to be a place where individuals are encouraged to live freely and responsibly, to express their opinions, and listen to the opinions of others. Motion to bring this before the body?
So, Lou.
Second? Wall, Tim? Okay, the motion's before the body, shall the voters adopt the following declaration of inclusion, which I read previously, and which you all have in front of you. Discussion?
Was there any particular reason for this to be brought to the board? Did we have any incident in which we were proven to be otherwise?
Board?
Yeah, this is a statewide effort that is spearheaded by a nonprofit group called, I believe, Vermont Declaration of Inclusion.org, and it's been underway for three years. Their goal is to get every town and city in Vermont to adopt this, this statement of inclusion. Presently, they have 135 towns of the 246 towns and cities that have adopted it. In our neck of the woods, it's Bethel, Brookfield, Chelsea, Royalton, Corinth, Randolph, Northfield, Roxbury have all adopted this over the past few years. Representatives of this group came to the select board before I was on the board and asked that we adopt that, and some towns and cities' boards have simply adopted it themselves at the meeting. And this board chose, chose to bring it to the town for consideration. I will note, does that address your question?
Yes, just the origin of, of this particular thing, I feel as though Braintree was already, already kind of unspokenly abided by that, and I also wonder if there would be any opposition or question to, or, well, I mean, I just wonder because they're not residents of our town in which they brought this to the board, they're not here today, so I do appreciate the statement, but I wonder if there's...
It was actually a resident that came to us and talked to us.
Perfect, but then I wonder...
I'm also very down on those, and actually, his name's Bob.
Bob, Bob!
He couldn't be here.
But I wonder if there was any reason to shorten the statement to the town of Braintree has been and will continue to be a place where individuals will encourage that last statement, I wonder if there's possibility of that, but there, I, I'll just reserve myself for other folks to speak, and I'll come back if I need that one.
Yeah, please use the mics.
Yep.
My question is, I don't know if this has been asked, or if anyone knows the answer, but is there any type of liability to the town by stating this?
It's, it's not a binding, it's not binding in any way, no. Speaking of...
Call the question.
Hold on, hold on a second, I got a comment online. This is the person who brought the motion, so, if I can get him in here. I'm figuring out how to work this thing. Okay, I think you're, you can go ahead, Bob.
Yes, I asked the board to consider this.
Oh, what happened? Computer went dead. I'm not kidding you. It just went blank.
Can we call him?
Other comments, questions while we resolve our technical issue? I have no idea. Just restart it. Anyway, so that was, yeah. That was Bob trying to... That was Bob trying to tell us what's going on. Other comments, questions while we dwell?
I have one up there with me. Can I reserve Bob, just try and get Bob back on here?
While we're, while we're waiting here, I did want to thank Linda Lubol, who every year says she's not coming back to the board. But somehow she's here every year. Thank you, Linda. If anybody wants to help next Tuesday, next year on Tuesday, Linda is always looking for help, so, want to help, care of lunch.
Somebody younger.
Yeah, I mean... Lynn Brown had a question. Hey, Grace, can you get Lynn Brown?
I'll go, call the question.
Okay. Wait, wait, I got Bob. Maybe. Hate these things. Or unmuted. There you go. All right, Bob, you're back. Sorry, the computer went dead on us, so go ahead.
Okay, yes, it did seem to die from my end. I pretty much finished what I needed to say, I just, I would like to see us adopt this resolution. Thank you.
There's a motion to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye. Opposed? Okay, the question before the board, before the body, shall the voters adopt the following declaration of inclusion? The town of Braintree condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, age, disability, or socioeconomic status, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all of its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all of our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Braintree has been and will continue to be a place where individuals are encouraged to live freely and responsibly, to express their opinions and listen to the opinions of others. Voting aye means you wish to pass the motion, voting nay means you wish to defeat it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. It appears the ayes have it, the ayes have it. That takes us to Article 10, transact any other business not of a binding nature. This is typically a time where people can offer interesting things that have happened to them over the course of the year, or what they're excited about for lunch, things like that. I've got one right there. Wait for the mic.
I had a brief follow-up about Article 9, it's just a question of, was there any particular incident in which we felt as though we were not meeting this, or was this something that just everyone kind of would like to adopt in making sure it's clarified to the general public?
There was, there was no, there was no incident that prompted...
That's wonderful to know.
Other business of a non-binding nature?
Every three years, Gifford Healthcare conducts...
Your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Kasha Evans. Every three years, Gifford Healthcare conducts a community health needs assessment and is really looking for input from community members. So there's a survey here, Gifford surveys, that you can pick up and fill out and return to Gifford, and your voice really does matter in trying to move forward in healthcare in our communities.
You just drop that off at the town office, they'll pick it up for me.
What Jesse said. Thank you.
Steve, I was just going to say, well, I'm not willing to serve on the cemetery commission. I'm willing to help out, and I bet there are others, too, if, if there's a day designated to go clean up branches from the cemeteries in the town, can you put it in front porch forum, or Facebook, or somewhere? I think that'd be a good turnout just to, to help out in, in life or short term.
That's a great suggestion, thanks, Steve.
You see something, do something.
Other business of a non-binding nature?
Yes, I was going to ask you about reappraisal, but we'll wait and see what the legislature does, because who knows?
Yep, yeah, we, the town will receive a note, a letter, a formal letter this summer, which will give us a little bit more information, so we'll be sure to publicize whatever that, whatever we find out as soon as we know.
Why is Rochester Hollow separated out, why is Rochester Hollow separated out as a line item?
Rochester Hollow is part of the road, is in Rochester and...
I'm hearing.
Go to the mic. Sorry, part of, part of that road is in Rochester, is not part of the town of Braintree, so we get revenue from them for what they pay us to sand and maintain the road.
But it's about doubled in the last several years.
Right, because we were charged, we were charged, that's income, that's money coming to us. We were charging them a low rate for the sand in the past, and we've now raised it to a market rate, essentially.
You afraid we'd rip that too much?
Did we raise it too much?
No, I don't know about that.
I really don't think it's quite enough yet.
Lord, Lord is loving for us to charge that.
Is that Michael Lord?
You know, we, we charge by the hour and by the yard, and so we're trying to determine what's a fair rate to, you know, for our trucks, and with our trucks going up in price by 100,000, I still say that the price per hour is a little bit on the low side. So we're working on that by next fall. So we're working on that by next fall. We're not going to change it just whenever, you know, really you can.
Yeah.
If the money's bit down the end of the
So we're going to wait until October, September, October and revisit it, see if
We have, we have to do it in time to give them a moment to prepare their budget because it's part, because our charge grows on their budget, so they have to be, be able to do that.
I didn't, I just asked you why it was a line item.
Yes, it, but it's because we charge them for the services. At their town meeting, they're wondering why they pay That's right. And they're, and they're also asking why it went up so high.
So the ones that don't know, there's actually five miles of Rochester Road on this side of the mountain, yet they don't come around to plow and sand. And they don't, they don't think they have it graded, do they, Dylan?
They graded it.
Think about where they graded themselves. That's a long ways to drive a graded, Joe.
Thank you.
Other, other comments? All right. Walt's suggesting we're all done with our business, which I think we're all in favor of. So having no other business to conduct, we will conclude this year's town meeting. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy life.